Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Being 6:30, I would like to call the Westminster Select Board Meeting of March 10th to order. This is the reorganization of the Select Board, hence why I'm calling the meeting to order. The first item for business is to elect a chair. And at this time, I'd accept nominations for that position.
I nominate Kevin Hughes as Chair of the Board.
Second.
Is there any other nominations for the Chair?
I'll move the recolled nomination.
Hearing none. Kevin Hughes, are you accepting this position?
I will.
Those in favor of Kevin Hughes being the Chair for this year's Select Board, say aye.
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 Board is zero. Jason, we still haven't heard from you. Are you working on your volume?
I'm trying.
There, we got you.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
So Kevin, I'm turning the meeting over to you.
Okay, so we'll proceed. You want me to proceed with the reorganization of the Select Board at this time?
Yes.
I will now take nominations for the Vice Chair.
I nominate Craig.
A second out.
Okay, we have a nomination of Craig for Vice Chair and a second. Any other nominations? Not seeing any further nominations. Craig, do you want to be Vice Chair?
Only if you don't ever miss a meeting, but yes, I'll do it.
That's a big request.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of Craig as Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Craig is the Vice Chair. I will now, as we continue through reorganization of the Select Board, take a nomination for the position Clerk.
I'll nominate Sue Harlow.
Second.
We have a nomination of Sue Harlow for Clerk, and we have a second. Are there any other nominations for the position of Clerk? Okay, seeing none. Sue, do you want to be the Clerk?
Sure.
Okay, having accepted, Sue Harlow is now the Clerk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Sue Harlow is now the Clerk. The new positions to be recorded. Millie, you got everything? Thank you. I'll now move on to the adjustments to the agenda. Many adjustments?
I have none. To answer Millie's question, Daniel is David Major. Attending the meeting.
And also, we have another guest too.
Yes, I just got the question asked to me, so I just answered it.
Okay.
Also forgive me if I just interject. I'm very sorry I've blown a tradition here. Not surprising. I wanted to take this opportunity for all of us to welcome Jason Perry to the Select Board of Westminster.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome aboard, Jason, really.
Thank you.
You know by the time you get off, you'll be a grandfather like the rest of us.
My kid will be almost out of high school.
Oh yeah, that's what Paul Harlow said to me when I first got on. He said, this is a job for grandparents, not parents.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome, Jason, and I also wanted to take this time and forgive me for being dilatory to thank Sheldon Bebe for his many years of service on this board. He's done a lot for this town, seen and unseen, and he will be missed but not forgotten, and I'm sure available whenever we need him. And his service should be recognized. So thank you to Sheldon Bebe for all the work and dedication to the town over all those years.
Reed.
And what I'd like to also thank Sue Harlow for being Chair. That was a tough year we went through with doing the Zoom and all this other stuff. I gotta thank you. You spent a lot of time on it, so.
Thank you. It was bruising, and I don't think it's over yet, so I think we need to give Kevin all the help he needs and wants. This goes along as a board, please.
And I want to thank Sue also, and she knows, for all the time and dedication and all the hard work she did. Really amazing, especially all the help she gave me. And thank you also for a great job as the Chair, keeping us all together. In a very difficult time, very difficult time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the, any more comments? Okay, moving on to the adjustments of the agenda. Are there any adjustments?
There is none.
Will now accept, motion to accept the agenda as a minute?
Minutes.
Minutes, my apologies.
I move we accept the minutes of the meeting of February 24th.
I'll second it.
Minutes have been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one opposed? Minutes are accepted for February 24, 2021. Communication and public comments. Anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to unfinished business. Town meeting procedure, rain date.
We were asked to reserve the Institute for your town meeting on May 15th. And in that procedure, we needed to come up with a rain date if it was really, really heavy rain. And so talking with Susan, we have tentatively set up Sunday, May 16th, the next day at 1:00 PM. Unless the Board deems that not acceptable. And I think that's where.
Any concerns over the rain date?
Why we picked the next day is because everything is going to be rented. It will be set up and porta-potties rented, all of the sound system, et cetera, so to postpone it another whole weekend would not be as economically good as the next day.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? We're all good on the day?
I am.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. Moving on to possible website renewal.
Mr. Chairman, can I address that, please?
Sure.
We have a, started as a social media committee, now we're on the Communications Committee, looking to update and make our website easier to navigate and use. And Russ Lazarak is helping us. We've hired him. He's also volunteering at the same time. And the committee met a week ago. Russ showed us some templates, and we talked about some of the things that we want to see, easier navigation. We want more information on the website. We'd like a calendar, a history page. We'd like to make updating the information that's there easier and faster, and a few other things. So I think Russ got quite a lot of input, and we're going to meet again in a couple of weeks when Russ will have some more things for us to look at. Russ, did you want to step in? Think you're here? Or no?
No, I think you covered it well. Thanks.
Short and sweet. So does anybody have any questions? I'll bring you more information as we go along. So thanks to Fran and that and Lori and the other people who've been on the committee that's been really helpful. Thanks.
Terrific. Thank you, Sue. Any more comments or none? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Collaborative Finance Processing Manual, aka the third draft.
I've gone as far as I can with this without Paul Harlow adding input, so he's back. He's been quarantining and being tested, so I'm sure in the next, before the next meeting, we'll have input from him. And the fourth draft will be looking for additional comments for approval.
Okay. Very good. Any additional comments, concerns, or input regarding the Finance Processing Manual? Seeing none. Thank you, Russ, as always. We shall move on to new business. First draft of yearly appointments of record.
So in your packet is the list that we typically use. Those in red are still up in the air. We haven't contacted them yet. But we have the Chair of the Select Board. We have the Clerk for the Select Board. I don't have the Activities Commission, Community Improvement Program. We have actually two members on video with us. Are you both still interested? Nate?
Are we up, which one are we on, Activities?
Going down to the red, the Community Improvement Program. Nate started, Fran Renaud, and Peter Stam.
Okay, I didn't know where you skipped to. I got you.
I'm hearing nothing from Nate. Fran, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Are you still interested in serving on that Board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Fran.
Or sorry, Russ. I spaced out there for a minute. Yeah, I'm still interested too.
Have you talked to Peter? Do you think he's still interested, Nate?
I have not talked with him. Communication with Peter is few and far between.
All right, I will, I will call Peter and confirm that. Conservation Commission, actually, Kathy Kingston is working with them, so I will contact her to make sure that those five people are still active. Senior Solutions, I haven't done anything with, nor the CRV Rivers Subcommittee. I need a representative to the DRB from the Select Board. Last year, and actually for many years, it's been Toby Young.
Fine with me.
Thank you, Toby.
Perfect. Finch Viewers and Inspector of Wood and Coal, I will get the hold of them. Planning Commission, I need a Select Board alternate.
I would do that if need be.
Jason, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
The West West Library Representative, I will contact them. And Wyndham Regional Planning Commission, I know Bobby has been very active, but I will give her a call, and we're still looking for one other for that. So this is a great start. I'm not after an approval, but if you knew of anything or things I can add, please let me know as time goes by.
And thank you to everyone who has agreed to serve that's here tonight. Okay. Any other comments on the appointments of record?
Russ, you're gonna bring it back, and then we're all done, so we can, as a board, pass the whole sheet, right?
Absolutely. Yep. Again, it's a work in progress, and when it gets to be completely recognized, I will bring it back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Russ. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Liquor renewal licenses, two of them.
In your packet, you have the two. They look identical, but they are not. Westminster Station Market is the first one, and Allen Brothers is the second one. They have had their liquor licenses for multiple years and without incidents, so what is your pleasure?
I move that we accept the liquor licenses, the two submitted to the Board.
Second that.
I have a motion. We have a motion to accept the two liquor license renewal applications presented. In a second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Toby. Any objections? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'll reclose myself.
Craig is not voting.
Correct.
Russ, what is the deadline? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I have a chairman question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
What is the deadline? Is there a deadline, Russ?
There is. License beginning May 1st, 2021, ending April 30th, 2022, so it must be May 1st.
Thank you.
Okay, the licenses are accepted into the record. Moving on to Town Land Off Davidson Hill, update.
We have some interest in the Town Land Off Davidson Hill. We were kind of waiting for spring, and it's getting there. We have about $7950 into the land by cleanup and taxes. The land obviously is not worth that for purchase price. It's one acre, and it's very, very narrow. It would, it would support a small home, tiny house, or a cabin. And I, all of the people that are interested are either going to keep it as land or create a cabin on it. So I'm not after it tonight, but I'd like you to start thinking about what we would accept for an offer. It would be an auction through our legal counsel. And the interested parties would be asked to come, and it would be publicized, of course, so that we'd get as many participants as possible. And like I said, it would be a it would be an auction, but we do have to have a price, a minimum price. So something to start thinking about. More information to follow.
I'm sorry, Russ, you did say, you said we do have sunk in costs into this.
We had to tear down, for public safety, we had to tear down the trailer. And so the disposal of the trailer and the back taxes that we paid for is roughly $7950.
Thank you.
So again, I will have the last tax card. I will get all that information together. But this is just to get you leading in the right direction so that we can make a decision in the next month or so.
Did you?
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry.
And if we go to, if we do, if we do it that way, can we actually have a number that we wouldn't take below? So in other words, we would entertain any bid over, let's say, $5,000 or something like that? In case nobody bids for it all, and somebody bids a dollar. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, we have to have a minimum to cover our expenses.
Right.
The maximum, if it went to $10,000, we can't make any money.
I understand that.
Cover our expenses. The rest would go to the family of William Travarro.
So that's what I'm saying. We set a, that's just, I'm picking a number, so don't think I'm for it, that we wouldn't take. That's the most we can, we can actually do with 11, if somebody give it, but as a board, we would entertain any bid over $5,000 or something like that, just to cover ourselves. Is that the way it works, or we can, don't set, we set the minimum at the $9,500?
That's, we set the minimum that you're willing to take for that land. It doesn't have to cover every expense, but it does have to cover the taxes, I would hope, which is only like $2,400 of that. So and the maximum will be whatever they bid, and again, the town will cover its expenses, period. The rest would go to the William Travarro Estate.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns at this meeting while we consider it? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on. Select Board Appointment, interim five-person Board for the Westminster School District.
I'm hoping somebody's gonna jump in and take the reins on this.
Oh, I thought you were going to. Well, we do have five people who have volunteered to be on the Board. Do you have the list, or do you need me to?
Oh, no, no. I wanted an explanation before we get to that point.
Ah, okay.
By one of the people, but I, again, I can.
Well, they're here, so, okay.
David, Cheryl, why don't you want to take a whack at it? Both of you? David, Major. Thank you, David.
Hi, hello, everybody. Let's see. This is the result of the fact that the town of Westminster voted to withdraw from the district we were forced to merge with Athens and Grafton almost two years ago, the school district. And then, at town meeting, Athens and Grafton voted to support that withdrawal, which would leave Athens and Grafton as their own district, somewhat similar to the way they have been running things for quite some years, because they have, they run the the Grafton School together. And it would leave, or essentially rebirth, the Westminster School District. So at this point, as a result of the motion that our town voters passed back in the fall, we are now needing to set up an interim Board. We can, which will then sort of affect the transition between the forced-to-merge Board and the and the new Town Board. And it will also be responsible for making a presentation to the State Board of Education detailing the fact that the Westminster School is, meets all the requirements of the state requirements for public education. And making the case for the Town School District. And then, that interim Board will be working until a permanent Board is elected at our town meeting scheduled for May 15 in a couple of months. So, and that will be a time when anyone else who may develop an interest in running for a school director position may, may run and be elected by whomever attends the town meeting on May 15 or maybe May 16. So I hope that clarifies where we're at.
I have a question.
Yep. We're gonna ask a question on the procedure of David, because always those town meetings, we don't do Australian ballot unless somebody asks you to stand up. But normally, when you're electing officers, you're doing Australian ballot. How would that work on town meeting?
It would be a, you're right, it would not be, in this particular case, it would not be an Australian ballot. It would be a a vote from the floor of the town meeting.
I don't see that working if there are more, if there are more than five, if there, if we have a contest, for instance.
There will be a there will be positions for one year, for two years, and for three years. And I think that we would then accept nominations for one-year positions, two-year positions, for three-year positions. And then whomever gets the most number of votes for each of those positions would be the school director or school directors for those positions. I, thinking off the top of my head.
Right, and so it would be people standing up, or say, all in favor of Joe's over here, and all in favor of Jim over there, or I haven't figured that out yet.
Right, well, that, we'll need to devote a little thought to that, and maybe we'll want to have some, the ability to do a paper ballot of the people.
You always, you always can at those town meetings. What is it, it's only gonna take like so many people to raise a hand, and you have to have a paper ballot. But you could get people to pass it that way.
Yeah. You know, it's entirely possible there will not be any contested positions, but if there is, then we'll want to be able to deal with it. You're right.
Hey, can I, this is Cynthia. Can I jump in, Kevin? Can I?
By all means.
So I'm, the warning is on, or the article is on the town meeting warning. Our town meeting isn't until May. So how can you appoint interim right now? Don't you have to wait until our town meeting to actually fill these positions? I mean, we, I don't understand how we're doing this now. And was the interim question advertised that you were looking for people to fill those interim positions?
Yes. Can I speak to that, Kevin?
Please, you.
Yeah, because we had a short amount of time. We didn't put it in the newspaper, but we did put it on the website and on Facebook at Front Port Forum, and Larry said that that would be adequate for the interim Board, of course, not for the permanent.
So how, so we knew in January that we were gonna need five people for this Board, because there was an article put on the warning. Why wouldn't you have put, let people put in their names and have it be done by Australian ballot, just like all the other positions in town? It feels like, a little bit like to me, that we're It feels like, a little bit like to me, that we're, we're, we're putting in five people now, and you know what's gonna happen. Those five people are gonna come to town meeting, and no one's, I mean, it's, I, I, I don't know, it feels very, it feels very odd to me. Like, like, it's already been predetermined who's gonna be in there. A little bit, I just don't understand why those weren't voted Australian ballot, just like the rest of the elected positions in town.
I, I, I think Cynthia, if you don't mind, Kevin, if I jump in?
By all means.
Um, i- i- it was a moot point until Athens and Grafton, uh, voted in favor of the withdrawal. If, if either, either one or both towns had not voted in favor of the withdrawal, uh, there was, there would be no board. So, uh, and, and when that, the Westminster motion was developed, we didn't know whether Athens and Grafton would be voting in January, or February, or at town meeting in March. Um, so I think that explains why there couldn't have been an interim board voted by Australian ballot at art, at our, uh, you know, first town meeting in, uh, in, uh, a few days ago, or a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I, uh, okay, that makes sense, I just, so what is the purpose of having to have this board together in the next forty-five days? Why don't we just wait until town meeting? Then, then people have fair warning that if they want to, I mean, I'm not expecting a huge rush of people to come out and say they want to be on it, but I think that they have to have the chance to know that it's available, but.
I, I, I agree, and, and I, I would like to make sure that as many people as can uh, who, who have an, any sort of interest would like, uh, are, have an ability to, um, at least try for the positions. The, uh, the reason why it's important to, uh, get started on this work is because now we've approved a, the, a new town district. I think none of us know, does that town district then have, uh, begin starting at the next next fiscal year, uh, July one, in which case there's all kinds of work that needs to happen? Does it not start until, um, a year from that? Um, does, um, and when will the State Board of Education have, uh, put it on their agenda for, uh, uh, for okaying, or, or, uh, or, uh, considering this withdrawal? Um, along, and so tho- those, uh, those questions are ones that I think need to be dealt with fairly quickly. Um, or, or certainly, we need to have a group of people ready to deal with them, um, uh, as they come up.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so, at one of the meetings that I did actually attend, that the Board of Education breaks for summer, and they said that there was not going to be a decision until August, is that not correct?
I, I don't know.
Then, if it's, let's say it's, it's August, just for the sake of to- for talking, why wouldn't the interim board be the body that brings us into the next school year? And then actually, uh, at our regular town meeting in March, then as Cynthia said, names could be on a ballot and, um, and chosen as we always do. Why are we forcing May fifteenth, um, permanent board, um, vote? When we don't know if we even need it yet?
They're good questions, uh, I, I think that the, um. Uh, I, I think at this point, there are, uh, there are a bunch of unknowns. And, um. And we need to be prepared with a, a, a body of people who can deal with those unknowns, and, and the unknowns, um. Include, when does the town, the town has voted to, um, to have its own school district now, that's been okayed with by Athens and Grafton. When does that, when is the start date of that school district? And then, the other question is, how, how quickly do we need to? One of the other questions, and unknowns, um, is how quickly do we need to start working on uh, putting together a presentation for the State Board of Education? And Russ, it sounds as though you have some information on that, that I, I did not, do not have, but, uh, or did not have. But tho- those are, um, uh, those are the questions that I have. And I'm, I'm curious, Cheryl, whether you have anything to add to this conversation?
Well, if, if I may, um, Chairman Kevin Hughes, if I can make a couple of comments, I'd be happy to do so.
By all means.
So, so to add a little bit of information, I'm, I'm, um, thinking about some of the questions we've had this evening. Keep in mind that the current board that governs the school in Westminster also governs the school in Athens and Grafton. We have currently in existence, the West, the Westminster-Athens-Grafton Unified Forced Merged School District. That school district stays with authority until the State Board of Education votes to a, uh, approve Westminster's withdrawal. So there is current governance under the auspices of the Westminster-Athens-Grafton School Board. I personally have served as an elected member of either the Westminster Board, or now this Forced Mergers Board uh, for six years, so on the March second ballot, I was, I was elected for another two-year term to serve on the, on the three-town, uh, the three-town board. Uh, for everyone's information, Melissa Carlstrom was elected in the last, uh, ballot at election for a two-year term, she has one year left. The five people who are willing to serve on this interim board, which has no authority, really, until and unless the State Board of Education does approve Westminster's withdrawal. That five-person board then, um, the, the people who have been willing to serve are me as a, you know, currently elected member of the Forced Merged, uh, District, Melissa, a currently elected member, and three people who were all elected at the last in-person town meeting to be advisors. What we called at that time, Town School Board Advisors, members of the community who were willing to be, uh, advisors. So those three, uh, people are among the three who stepped, uh, stepped up to be on this interim board. Reinforcing what David said, uh, we have been told by legislators in the state that the sooner we can get to the attention of the State Board of Education to take action, the better. Because it's not clear that they will willingly vote to approve this, this withdrawal. And so, uh, and so remembering again also that in the election where Westminster voted to withdraw, Westminster voters also approved having the town select board establish an interim board. So we're following through on what the townspeople voted to do. That's what's going on here now, and this interim board would only, um, um, step in for this transition process. I, I wasn't involved in the discussion about whether to elect, um, a permanent board on May fifteen. I think that would be the right of the town to do so, having to, uh, uh, and could do so from a floor vote. As David has suggested, that's certainly, uh, within practice and law. Um, and, and yet, everybody needs to remember that that board still has no authority until the State Board of Education takes action. And so governance will continue under the auspices of the three-town board until that occurs. I hope that's helpful.
Yes, thank you for that very clear, concise, and coherent synopsis. Um, is there any public comment on both David Majors and Cheryl Charles comments tonight from, under the public that are here that wish to be heard? Okay, um, now, um, in the packet tonight, there was a, um, document, uh, from Law, uh, from Larry Slayson that was sent to Sue Harlow. I don't know, Sue, did you wanna talk about that?
Um, this is the discussion of the vote, um, yeah, we were, well, we, I think we just went over that. We had some discussion about, uh, exactly what that article meant. Um, as an English major, I felt that it could be interpreted either way, that we would either schedule the vote on May fifteenth, or schedule it for the fifteenth, anyway. Um, but, uh, we decided to interpret it, say that the vote will be scheduled on May fifteenth, and I think, um. Uh, I was curious, so I asked Larry whether we could have a floor vote, or it had to be Australian ballot, um, which in some ways would be preferable, but, uh, we'd really be burdening our town clerks who have had innumerable elections this year, okay, that's just a slight exaggeration. Uh, but if we could do it from the floor, um, I think that would be preferable, and you said that we could do it, so. I think that's, is that what you're talking about, Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and his comment that, you know, as long as the voters were notified in some fashion to solicit, listen, just make sure that it was, um, fairly enunciated to the most amount of people, if they were interested.
For the interim, for the interim, yeah, yeah, yes, the, uh, more legal, uh, warning, I'm sure for the May fifteenth, um, election.
Can I ask a question?
By all means.
I think what messes me up when you say a school board, instead of a school board advisory, advisory school board, it then makes it sound like you're advisory, which is what you're basically saying. Because when I kept saying school board, how are we gonna end up with two school boards, and who's gonna resign over the other one? And it does make sense, if they're just advisory. Too bad we couldn't have the word in there, because it would actually, people wouldn't understand what that board was all about at then, that they were just advisory school board. Just my input.
Uh, hi, Kevin, may, could I jump in?
Please.
Um, Craig, the, the, it is a, it is a good point that you make. Um, however, the board, uh, that is, that is elected by the townspeople uh, in May, um. Could become the actual board two days later, if the State Board of Education okays the, uh, the re-establishment of the Westminster Town School District. Um, so, I don't think we'd want to elect them as advisors when it's entirely possible, if not likely, that at some time, time during their term, they will become the board.
Well, that's my point, we're not electing, we're appointing them, so as a select board, we're gonna appoint them with no terms, other than the term would expire in May fifteenth, when the, when it gets done, that's. So to me, that's what I'm saying, you're appointing a Westminster School Board Advisory, or a Westminster Advisory Board, but whatever. It, we are appointed, we're not, we're not elected.
I'm happy with the term interim, so.
As long as everybody knows their mission is to be advisories, I, I have no problem with that.
Craig, would the, um, forgive the interruption, would the, uh, would would the, specifically stating that there will be the interim board as appointed, will be in an advisory position only through May fifteenth?
I understand what David's saying, if, if the state came along and accepted it, I guess they would then become the board at that point, this is really kinda different, because I never, I don't ever remember appointing somebody to a board that then becomes an official board.
Can I say something? I, I don't, I think the interim board is not going to become the permanent board, the interim board is just serving until the permanent board is elected in May. And, uh, I sort of have a problem with the word advisory, because who are they advising?
Good question, the regular school board.
Interim means a certain amount of time, then they're done.
But except that they have rule, they have no rulership over the regular school board, that's right. Would she explain it that way, that I'm comfortable with that? But if you're on the other board, you're going like, well, now are they telling me what I can do? No, they're only there to help advise that board, because that board is still running the school. If I was the superintendent or the principal, I would ask those questions, which board is telling me what to do? And that's all I was bringing up, she explained it real well, I understand it now, I would just wanna say, okay, if we appoint this board, they realize that they're there to be advisories to the regular school board, that is still proceeding, that's still running the school, they're still telling the principal what to do, and still working with the superintendent's office.
I think that some of you are the same members anyway, right, so you'd be telling yourselves what to do, but, whatever.
I, if I can suggest this is Cheryl again, I, wh- what is the language that, the, we, the voters voted for? I would refer to the language that was in the articles that the voters passed. I'm, I think it might have been interim board, but if we could check that language, that would make sense.
Yeah.
The, um, documents that I'm reading while provided for this evening comes from, um, Town Council Leonard Slayson. Uh, and states the following, the voters approved Articles one and three at the special Australian ballot meeting of January fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Upon approval of Article two, the select board has authority to appoint five town residents to an interim school board to serve until town election of school board members at the annual meeting scheduled for May fifteenth two thousand twenty-one. Article seventeen of the warning for annual meeting approved by the select board on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one asks the voters to elect five residents to serve a, as board members with staggered terms as existed prior to the forced merger. The election will occur on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, does anyone have any other providence that would contravene that?
I have the ballot in front of me right this second, and it's Article number two, uh, number three. Appoint five town residents to an interim town school district board to effect the transition and return of the operation of schools and educational programs to the town school district.
I, I'll go back to what I keep saying, I had no problem, but when I sat down tonight, and I read all this ahead of time, I thought we were appointing a school board that was actually gonna instantly take over and run the school Westminster. And now I'm understanding it a little clearer, but even everything I read, it just made it sound like this school board is now officially starting up, and they're gonna take over, and then after listening to her, realized that, no, they're not, they're only being advisory, and like I said, it isn't like I didn't read this, I read it thinking that, hey, after tonight, this new board starts up, because we just appointed five people to this new Westminster School Board. They have nothing to do with Athens and Grafton, I know that, but they would actually now have meanings to run the, the school Westminster, but I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Any further discussion then, or do, have we, are we comfortable with where we're at?
We're done.
Okay, do we need a motion?
Motion two. What is the motion that we need?
You need to appoint the five interim board first person board, and you should name the names.
All right.
And, if I may, I just, you know, for Craig's point, um, I'd like what Russell with the prerequisite of what was voted, specifically out of Article two, that Russell read. As to why we're making this appointment. that Russell read, as to why we're making this appointment.
Okay. I'll be, I'll be willing to make that a motion, that motion. I move that we appoint five town residents, Melissa Carlstrom, Elise Manning, Vanessa Stern, Charles Hutchison, and Cheryl Charles to an interim town school district board to effect the transition and return of the operation of schools and educational programs to the town school district.
A second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any more commentary?
One quick question. Were there the five names? Was there only five names?
There are five names submitted, and I believe, Russ, we put, you did not hear from anyone else who wanted to put their name in. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment, concern, public comment? Cynthia, yes, go ahead, David.
Just thank you to those five people for volunteering to do this work.
Absolutely, and thank you, and Cheryl, and everyone else for all the work you've done throughout this whole process. Okay.
Kevin, Kevin, this is Cheryl, just another quick comment. I think it's, I believe that it's necessary that we have this kind of commitment from the town of Westminster to be able to go to the State Board of Education and say that we have an interim board here, or if it turns out we have a permanent board by that time. The State Board not only wants to see that there is quality education provided here, but they want to see the kind of willingness to serve. And so you're taking this action tonight, following a vote of the people to instruct you to do that, is much appreciated, and I think it will really help in this process going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Charles. All those in favor, the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion taken. Thank you, everyone. Managers report.
Just a few things. We are cracking down on the trash and recycling program. We are not changing any of the rules. We are just enhancing them, trying to make sure that everyone is following suit. We have found that people are mixing their trash and recycling. They're not placing them in lidded containers. They're ripping the tags in half and putting half on a bag. And a lot of trash is being generated by businesses and brought home, because it's expensive to get rid of. So we are cracking down on the violations. We've got a tag that we placed on the bags and on your recycling container for the last week. We will keep this up for about a month and make sure that everybody is back into compliance, because it's too expensive not to, to follow the rules. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Russ, is there a list of the costs and penalties that are associated with these violations?
No, there's no, no penalties, other than they're not being picked up. They're left right at the curb. So people are calling us and complaining that they got a violation, and I've never done this, and it's like, that doesn't make it right. It, this is the rules, and this is why we did this. This is why we spent so much time with the program, trying to keep it affordable.
Very good, and thank you for your fall through and effort.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Nate Stoddard.
Please, go ahead, Nate.
Along with that, I would just, I know the Select Board just extended the three-year contract for a year. I would urge the Select Board to keep this in the back of your minds, that next year, maybe revisit some of these rules. The lidded thing is a little extreme. If you drive around anywhere, especially Brattleboro, you'll see recyclable, in recycling containers out in the open. I think it's a little, little picky, but whatever. And maybe think about a second option for stickers. It's a little counterintuitive to put two 13-gallon trash bags, non-compostable 13-gallon trash bags, into a 30-gallon, non-compostable trash bag, just to put one sticker on instead of two stickers. So I'm wasting more plastic. So maybe something to think about for next contract, is a second sticker option for smaller bags. And maybe a little more ease to recycling, as most of my recycling does not fit in my 50-gallon lidded trash can every week.
Just to clarify the one point, that you can tie two 16-gallon bags together and not put it in a third bag with one tag. That has been part of our program for, well, since the start. You can tie them together in one tag, as long as they meet the requirements of 30 pounds or 33 gallons.
Good to know, thank you. The other point is, it talks about wrapped around the neck, drawstring bags, you don't get a neck.
Just around the, around the strings is all we ask. What's happening is they're wrapping them in tight little circle, and you can't tell if it's a whole tag or not a whole tag. And we're finding that they're ripping them in half, and that's why they're doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Nate, Nate, thank you for your input and your wise observations. We'll take that under advisement. Continuing with the managers' report.
Pavements, pavement bids are due on Friday. We've had quite a few companies show interest, which is great. That will be in front of you next meeting. A delinquent tax reminder that being mailed out tomorrow for all of the folks that still owe. That is the first mailing. The second mailing will be a tax sale notice for those who have two years or more on roughly March 25. All two-year delinquent tax parcels will, that have not attempted to pay or request, will be handed over to Larry Slayson's office on April 9. So if they're two years or more, and they have contacted the town and created a contract or a payment schedule, they will not be on that list. If you do not contact this office with any attempt to make payments, then your parcel will be sent to Sam and Anostrum's office, like I said, on April 9. Tax sale will be at the beginning of July to mid-July of 2021. Questions?
I have, I have a quick question. We were looking at a bit of an impact on tax receipts this year because of COVID-19.
We have had some, but most people that have had an issue have called. And we've already made acts to, to, to pay in increments that they can afford.
Okay, and I appreciate the, I think we all appreciate that greatly, and I know you're very busy. Is it possible for us to have the board be given sometime in the short, in the interim short future, some type of a look, Russ, as to how shallow we are? And what level of, you know, forgiveness we're giving that way? We can be just a little bit, that we can be sensitive to what's going on out there, please?
Sure, absolutely. You got one, I think, two meetings ago, and I'll give you the update of how we're doing on it. The last thing is, with the new year coming up and new Select Board members in your packet, I gave you new and returning Select Board Members class. If anybody's interested, you don't have to let me know right now, but just give me a call. It is via Zoom, of course, and the topics include legal requirements, open meeting law, public records, conflict of interest, Dillon's Rules, relationship of Select Board with town employees and their officials, key municipal employment laws and human resources best practices. It's from VLCT, and.
There wasn't a date on that, was there, Russ? I didn't see.
I don't see one either.
Interesting.
Yeah, if you could find that out, that would be great.
I surely will. Find out the date, hey.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's not Zoom, if it's just like a webinar or something like that.
It would be, and it will, but it will be, of course, in a classroom with speakers, et cetera, so I will find out the date and get it back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Boards and commissions.
The planning commission is planning on a a subcommittee meeting on March 15, that's next Monday night at 7:00. They would like participation from other boards and commissions to weigh in on their, of their, their event that they're going to have with community mapping. If anybody is interested, I will forward the link to you, but again, it's Monday night, the 15th, at 7:00 PM, and they would like Select Board presence, if possible.
Well, I would, I, why don't you just forward it to all of us?
I can do that. I will do that. That's it.
Thank you. Other business?
Before we get to the last one, what we didn't do is, we normally have a quick discussion on, are we still going to hold all these meetings so we can actually get it out for the calendar? Are we still going to hold these on Wednesday? We used to be on Tuesday, we used to be at 7:00. I don't have an opinion, but especially now we get a new board member, I think we should just have a quick discussion that we're going to either hold these meetings all the same date and time, or change it.
Thanks, Craig. Let's do that. Is Wednesday still good for everybody?
Kevin, I, from the beginning, I preferred Tuesday, but I think there was some conflict, and so Wednesday's okay, although I prefer Tuesday.
I don't remember what the conflict is, but I can do.
There's a conflict for me on Tuesdays, but.
You had a class or something.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, yeah, I could, if we did it at 7:00, it would be fine.
Then we like 6:30 better, so.
Well, if we're on Zoom, I could do it at 6:30 on Tuesday, too.
Yeah, we're not going to be on Zoom forever, though, so. I guess, I guess we, I vote to keep it on Wednesday unless somebody else has a problem.
I guess, we should ask Jason.
I don't have any issue with date or time, really. Later is better for me, but I'm good with either way.
I'm good at 6:30. It works a little handier for me, to be honest with you. I'm happy with all Wednesdays at 6:30. I just wanted to make sure we're all in agreement.
No, you're absolutely right. That is the, that's what's done every year at this time. So thank you for doing that, sir. So we will remain, unless otherwise posted, at Wednesday at 6:30 PM for our Select Board meetings every other week. Agreed?
I'm good.
It's not every other week, though. It's the second, of course, Wednesdays.
Thank you, Tony. Any other business?
Kevin, this is Cynthia. I have something I wanted to ask.
By all means.
So I have heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, and I don't know that I heard it tonight, but that our Assistant Treasurer, Suzy, has resigned. Is that the case?
I was not apprised of that.
Russ?
I'm assuming yes. I haven't got the word from Paul. I have not talked to Paul, but I am assuming that that is correct.
Okay, so I was just curious, so I guess maybe when that becomes more permanent as a, I just want to say that I, with the limited interaction that we had with her at Nemrick, she was doing a great job, so I just wanted to say that I'm sorry to hear that, that that might be a possibility. But I was just curious what the thoughts were, because we need somebody in there. I know that Paul's back, but. So I was just curious what was going on with that, because it wasn't mentioned.
Thank you, Cindy, and that's what other business is for. We're lucky to have you to bring that up. Is there any discussion on that at the moment? Since, is that official, Russ?
Again, it's not official to me. I don't know the particulars.
Okay, so that's all something for us to think about, and as soon as we do get the particulars, Russell, is it okay to ask you to let us know?
Absolutely, I'll be in touch with Paul shortly.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Any other business? Saying none?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning until our next meeting, March 24, at 6:30? Say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose?